You've got to turn it on so the folks at home can hear us. There we go, all right.
Wonderful, thank you. So I'm now calling to order the Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of March 23rd. The time is 6:35 PM. And I'm very pleased to welcome all of you who are with us here at City Hall and also joining via Zoom. Charlie, can you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Dram?
Here.
Commissioner Ghizoni?
Here.
We are expecting Commissioner Henme shortly. Commissioner Wax?
Here.
Vice Chair Simons?
Here.
And Chair Chafe.
Here.
So we have a quorum of five commissioners present.
Wonderful. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Public Comment. We'll take public comment on any matters within the commission's purview that are not on tonight's agenda. Each commenter will have three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no one here in person, Charlie, is there anybody on Zoom or have you received any online speaker cards?
I have not received any online speaker cards and do not see any attendees with raised hands.
Sorry. I have not received any online speaker cards and I do not see any attendees with raised hands.
Okay, great. Then we will close the public comment period and move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Approval of the Action Minutes from February 23rd, 2022. Do any commissioners have comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing no comments, can I please have a motion to approve the action minutes from February 23rd, 2022?
I'll move to do that. Second it.
I was moved by Commissioner Wax and, sorry, who was the second?
He was first. I was second. He moved, I seconded. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chafe.
Aye.
Five ayes, the minutes are approved.
Wonderful. And now we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the Community Development Director's Report. Charlie, can we please have your report?
Thank you, Chair Chafe. So with regard to the most recent city council meetings, there have been two city council meetings since your last meeting on February 23rd, and those were on March 7th and March 21st. On March 7th, there were no planning-related items on the agenda. On March 21st, the city council approved the annual report on the general plan, which you had previously approved at your February meeting, and it was forwarded to the state. They also approved a grant application authorizing the application of a Emeryville Crescent Climate Adaption and Habitat Restoration Feasibility Study and Implementation Strategy grant for that. And in other news, I just want to call your attention to several upcoming events. One will be a ribbon cutting for the bicycle and pedestrian counter on the greenway, and that will be on the greenway at 66th Street on April 1st at 10:00 AM. Second is a public meeting to discuss the expansion of Christie Park in conjunction with the Christie Sites Housing Project. That's called Christie Housing Project and Park Expansion Meet and Greet. It's on March 25th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Christie Park. And if the weather is not favorable, the alternative location will be in the public market. There's also a public meeting hosted by the Alameda County Transportation Commission on the San Pablo Corridor Study. This is the portion of that study that is in North Oakland, Berkeley, and Albany, so it's not the Emeryville part of that corridor. There have previously been meetings about our portion, but if anybody's interested in the northerly portion, that meeting is on Thursday, March 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Berkeley Adult School at 1701 San Pablo Avenue in Berkeley. And then finally, there's the Healthy Families Festival and Egg Hunt at ECCL on April 8th, and that is from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Finally, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce our newest staff person, who I don't believe you have met yet. This is Assistant Planner Alyssa Chung. She has been with us since January, I think, but this is her debut at the Planning Commission. So would you like to say anything, Alyssa?
Am I on? Okay. Hey, good to be with you all, in person no less. I'm very excited to dig deep into Emeryville's planning history and future, and I'm excited to be working with y'all.
And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you very much. Charlie, are there any questions from the commission on Charlie's report? Okay, seeing no questions, welcome, Alyssa. Very happy to have you here. We'll move on to Item Six, which is Disclosure of Ex parte Communications and Conflicts of Interest. Now is the time to share any ex parte communications or recusals related to tonight's agenda. Please raise your hand if you have any to announce. Okay, seeing no recusals or ex parte communications, we can move on to our first public hearing, which is Item 7.1. This is a temporary women's emergency shelter, and we are going to have the staff presentation from Miru, I believe. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Planning Commission. It's a pleasure to be back in person after three years. It was three years ago that the March Commission meeting got canceled and we were all sent home, so it's, I can't believe it's been three years, but here we are. So today's first item is a temporary emergency women's shelter at 4300 San Pablo Avenue. This is the location of the site, and this is how it looks like. The top is the San Pablo Avenue frontage and the bottom is the 43rd Street frontage. And these are the existing porta-potties, which were initially used by the city's recreation center. There is a lot of site history. As a reminder, in August of '29, the commission approved a use permit to allow for a temporary emergency shelter for families. The shelter was operated by the East Oakland Community Project, and it operated till December of 2020. Since April 2021, the city council allowed building futures for women and children to allow for continued operation of the family front door coordinated entry system, which is a long way of saying basically performing office functions. And they ceased operations in August of last year. In addition, there are currently existing entitlements for a 68-unit, 100% affordable intergenerational housing project that will be built by EEH. The commission may remember that this project was reviewed by you at two study sessions last year in March and in July, and since it's an SB 35 project, was approved administratively on December of last year. EEH is currently in the phase of acquiring project funding and does not anticipate breaking ground in the next one year. So what we have today is Berkeley Food and Housing Project Women and Shelter has been in operation since 1992 in Berkeley, and it provides warm, clean beds and freshly prepared daily meals and support services for their clients to overcome their barriers to housing. The applicant will be speaking a little bit more about how BFHP operates, so I'm not going to go too much into detail. BFHP is looking for a temporary site for the shelter because the shelter on Dwight Way was damaged by fire in late 2022. The shelter at 4300 San Pablo will be for a period of six to eight months. Some of the operating characteristics, the shelter is expected to provide shelter to no more than 32 women at any given time. They partner with the Alameda County's Coordinated Entry System for assessments and placement in the shelter, and enrollments are completely by appointment. So what that means is that it prevents any need for people to line up or wait outside the facility. The average length of stay is expected to be 90 days. The facility will operate 24/7 and will be staffed at all times. There will be no cooking on-site, meals will be delivered daily, and there will be on-site supportive services for residents. So this is the flow plan for the shelter. These are the existing porta-potties. This area is the office area. This is the common areas, and these are where the beds will be. So this is sort of the entire flow plan. A few details, as I mentioned, the portables will be reused. The showers cannot be incorporated, so a shower trailer will be provided, and this was what the previous shelter did as well, so this is nothing new. Loading, meal delivery, and laundry service for bedding and towels will take place in the existing loading zone on 43rd Street. And trash and recycling area will continue to be stored behind the security fence on the east side of the building. There is no parking available on-site. So this is sort of the site plan, showing you loading occurring on 43rd Street, where the discards are and where the shower trailer is. This is in our MUR zone, mixed use with residential, that's the land use designation, as well as the zoning district. There are several overlays here. One is the transit hub overlay, neighborhood retail, as well as pedestrian priority. In terms of the FAR, there is no change since they are reusing and not adding. Building height remains the same. Density is not applicable since this use type is considered a commercial and institutional use type, and no development bonus is triggered, and no parking is provided. In terms of parking, our code says that for emergency shelters, the requirement is to be determined. So at the time when the last shelter was proposed and a use permit was approved, the commission at that time determined that the parking, the maximum parking would be 14 spaces. So as we do not have minimum parking requirements anymore, so the parking requirement for this project is between zero and 14 spaces. The applicant estimates peak staffing to be five people during the day. There are conditions of approval attached to the staff report, and these are the same conditions which were attached to the family shelter which operated on this site. And basically what they do is they ask that the applicant direct their staff and clients away from the neighboring streets like 41st Streets, SX Street, 43rd Street, and on Park Avenue. The second condition also requests the applicant make good faith efforts in getting parking arrangements with the nearby parking lots, such as the prominent, the one that is in front of the CVS. Just to note, the previous shelter, there were no problems that were identified by either the fire or the police department or the building division or by any members of the public. And parking was generally not seemed to be an issue for them. And that shelter was bigger than this one. I think it accommodated around 70 beds, and this one is less than that. So in order to approve the use permit, these are the standard five findings. Staff believes that these can be made, and they have been elaborated in your staff report as well as in the resolution. So that concludes my presentation, and we are recommending that the commission approve the project subject to the conditions of approval. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant also has a presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Miru. At this time, are there any clarifying questions for Miru, for staff, from commissioners? Commissioner Dram, go ahead.
I have two questions. One is, you mentioned that we cannot incorporate the shower. Would you mind to explain what's the reason for that?
I think it's just to do with the building code. It's a portable body, the portables for the area, and I think the connections cannot be made, and it's a temporary to begin with. So I think in terms of cost visibility, it's just cheaper to bring the shower trailer in. And I think, Charlie, do you have anything to add?
I would just also note that the previous temporary family shelter that was in the same building also had a shower trailer, because there's no showers in the building.
Yes, I think, yeah, like I mentioned in my presentation.
That's perfect. And the second question is why this shelter is providing less shelter than the previous one?
It's a different organization, and you can ask the applicant when she comes to see what the needs are.
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the questions and answers. Any other questions right now, clarifying questions? No? Okay, seeing none, I think we can move to the applicant's presentation when you're ready.
Okay. So Angela, I'll invite you, and let me put up your presentation. Let's see. Is that it? No, no, that's not it.
Oh, it's the bottom, yeah, you got it.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, so you can just tap down here.
Just down, okay, great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Angela Upshaw. I'm the COO for Berkeley Food and Housing Project. And I'm here to share, as Miro mentioned, our request for a conditional use permit for the temporary women's shelter located at 4300 San Pablo Ave. Okay, so Berkeley Food and Housing Project has been providing food and housing assistance to our communities for over 50 years. Initially, starting as a small meals program in Berkeley, we have since expanded to providing an emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, boarding care services, and wraparound case management services, which include employment, housing navigation, tenant sustaining support, and we are now serving seven counties, and we do still serve those hot meals to our community every day. Our mission is to ease and end the crises of homelessness in our communities. We believe that safe housing is a fundamental human right, and we envision communities where everyone has access to affordable housing. Our core program goals are to provide support, including access to fresh and healthy food as clients work towards independence, to help our clients obtain permanent housing as quickly as possible, and to provide ongoing support to help our clients remain employed in their homes. Our core values are equity, diversity, inclusion, community, and transparency. As Miro mentioned, we have had our women's shelter since 1992, and in that shelter, we provide warm, clean beds, freshly prepared meals daily, and support services to each client to help them overcome their barriers to housing. Unlike many shelters, which only operate overnight, our facility is 24/7, so clients have a safe place to stay during the day while they work towards their independence. The primary goals of the women's shelter are to provide immediate, safe shelter for women in need of urgent support. Support services include helping to identify and apply for affordable housing opportunities, securing employment and benefits, and accessing physical and mental health care. We also provide case management to help them work through any unique barriers they may have. For example, we do serve a lot of women who are leaving their homes due to domestic violence or help them attain restraining orders. At full capacity, BFHP can shelter and support with food 32 women at a time. Unfortunately, in November of 2022, our BFHP Women's Shelter location at 2140 Dwight Way experienced a fire. Thankfully, no one was injured in the fire, and everyone was safely relocated to other locations. Since repairs are extensive, we would like to temporarily relocate to this location at 4300 San Pablo Ave in Emeryville. The program will operate at that location, as Miro mentioned, for six to eight months as a temporary location during the rehabilitation of our Dwight Way facility. Once Dwight Way has been completely rehabbed and we have obtained our occupancy permit, we will close this temporary location. The shelter will remain open to its clients during the day. We have daytime staffing, who provide on-site housing navigation and case management. This former recreation center is easily converted into a space that is comfortable for unhoused individuals. There's a large room inside the shelter, which will be designated as a community space for shelter participants. There is also ample outdoor space available in the rear of the building, and it's shielded from the street and neighboring buildings by a fence. There's a second large room inside the shelter, which will function as a living room, dining room, and meeting room. And we will have a microwave and refrigerator on-site to store meals, but all meals will be prepared off-site at our commercial kitchen at our Hope Center location, and meals delivered daily. The shelter will have large storage bins for residents to keep their belongings organized within their assigned sleeping area, and we will meet all applicable federal, state, and life safety regulations that pertain to emergency shelter. Trash, recycling, and composting services will be in place, and bins will be covered and kept in a locked area on the 43rd Street side of the property for pickup. We will provide a washer and dryer that will be made available for clients with designated laundry hours. BFHP does partner with Alameda County and their Coordinated Entry System for assessments and placement into our shelter. Persons needing a shelter bed can be assessed at one of the county's housing resource centers or by calling 211. BFHP, we do complete the shelter intakes on-site for same-day enrollments and placements, and enrollments are all done by appointment. And as Miro mentioned, we are 24/7, so there's no lines or people waiting in queue outside of the facility. That's the location there. And then, as also mentioned, since although this location does provide several restrooms, there are no shower facilities. So BFHP will contract with Portable Restroom Trailers LLC to provide on-site ADA two-station portable shower restroom trailer. That will ensure that our clients do have access to this necessary service. The trailer will be serviced by Portable Restroom Trailers LLC and will be removed at the end of our contract. And that's all I have prepared for you today, and I'm available for any questions you may have about our agency, the program, or our plans for the location. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any clarifying questions at this point from commissioners for the applicant? No? Great. So I'd now like to open the public hearing portion of the meeting. The public hearing period is open at 6:57, and speakers who are wishing to speak at this time will have three minutes each. Is there anyone here in the chambers who would like to speak during this public hearing? Okay, seeing no hands here, Charlie, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
I have received no online speaker cards, and there is no one among the attendees who has indicated they want to speak.
Okay, great. And still seeing no hands here, I will now close the public hearing at 6:57. And we'll now go to Commissioner's comments and feedback. Does anyone want to start?
I'm happy to start. Project seems great. Sorry you have to come to this rather than just getting started, so keep it short. Thank you.
That goes for me, too. Could I remind the commissioners to please speak into your microphones? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Simons. Would anybody like to go next? Okay, Commissioner Dram, go ahead.
Thank you for coming to Emeryville. I wish you can stay longer in the future. Wish you luck. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dram. Commissioner Ghizoni?
Yeah, thank you to the staff and to the project for your presentations. I'm happy to see this be a good use of the space that's not being used at all right now, so I think it looks good.
Great, and Commissioner Wax?
I concur.
Great, thank you. Okay, and I will also say that I feel lucky that Emeryville can host this project, even if it's short-term. Also, sorry to hear about all the damage, and I'm sure it's not easy. I think it's a great use of the space. I don't have any other comments at this time. So I think, seeing no other comments or questions, we could look for a motion. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I move the motion.
Okay, so Commissioner Dram, you're moving to approve the conditional use permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I second that?
Go for it.
All right, on the motion to approve the application, Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghizoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henme is absent. Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
Chair Chafe?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you, and thank you for the great presentations. Best of luck. Yeah. Great, we will now move on to Item 7.2, which is a public hearing on 6221 Hollis Street Livework Signage. I believe, Alyssa, you're going to give the staff presentation? Wonderful, go ahead.
Right. Good evening, commissioners. I'll be presenting on 6221 Hollis Street Livework Signage. This is a major sign permit application for two new projecting signs that will say general cable building. So this is the site location. Oh, hold on, I'm going to just minimize this real quick. Hold on, sorry, apologies.
Hold on, sorry, apologies. So this is the site location, as I said, it's 6221 Hollis Street. To help orient yourselves, you can see that Doyle-Hollis Park is to the southeast of the site. It's an existing live-work building with a commercial ground floor. And this is the two elevations, looking from the intersection of 62nd and Hollis, where the signs will be proposed. And you can see that here as well. This is what the signs will look like when installed. So as you can see, they will be installed on those tallest portions of the building, on those two elevations. Both of the signs are identical in size. They will project four feet from the face of the building. They will be 35 feet and 3 inches in height, and they will have a depth of 6 inches. They are double-sided, so there will be text on both sides, and the sign area of each sign will be 141 square feet. As you can see from the materialist board I passed around, it's going to have a black aluminum background with a brushed brass text in framing, and it will be illuminated with halo lighting that's going to be backlit against the text and also that frame around the edges. I'll also note, maximum aggregate sign area is defined as one square foot of sign area per linear foot of public frontage. And on both of these frontages, 62nd and Hollis, these signs would fall well below that. So we'll focus first on 62nd Street. You can see the existing and proposed rendering. You can see that it is also 19 feet and 6 inches above the sidewalk, which is well above the required nine feet of height. This is in evening rendering, showing the halo lighting. This is the one on Hollis Street, and the proposed rendering to the right. Also, 19 feet, 6 inches above the ground, and an evening rendering. So the major design review findings for signs are as follows. Proposed signs are necessary. They're no larger than necessary. They comply with the planning regulations and design principles. They keep with the visual character of the area. They're readable, and they relate well to buildings and architectural features. And you can find a longer discussion of those findings in your staff report. This project, or this building, is also identified as a significant structure in the planning code, so we have to make a preservation and reuse finding for significant structures as well. But the proposed project will retain and enhance all or most of the features of the structure that make it significant. And for 6221 Hollis, this is a taller central piece with poured concrete pilasters and windows centered on door, as well as the window pattern on Hollis Street. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission does approve this major sign application, subject to the attached conditions of approval. So I'm available for questions. The applicant also has a short presentation to make.
Wonderful, thank you so much Alyssa. Are there any clarifying questions for staff at this point? Okay, seeing no questions, we are ready for the applicant's presentation whenever they are.
All right. We'll pull that up now. All right, it's your stand.
And you to just use the arrow keys. Okay.
Hi there. I'm Kirsten Warvin. I'm with Wareham to talk about this proposal, and we're looking forward to hearing the feedback you have on it. As you know, this property is... So that is the Wareham portfolio, and we've highlighted for you which property is with the arrow, and as denoted in staff's report, it is basically diagonal from Doyle Park. And it is a two-story building. The upper half is with live-work units, and the bottom half is with commercial units. With everything that's been going on in Emeryville, with all the improvements, we felt it was time to give this building a proper identity for the area, and particularly along Hollis Street. Hollis is becoming more and more of a thoroughfare, and just felt that this building was getting lost and needed to have a designation for the live-work designation area for that entry, and then also along Hollis. Wareham has hired MultiStudio as the designer, and here to present the details of the project is the Principal Lauren Moss, and she'll go over all the details and be able to answer any specific questions regarding the project.
Thanks Kirsten. Good evening Commissioners. Yeah, I'm Lauren Moss with MultiStudio, and happy to be here talking about this project. So this building was built in 1920, and it was built by the General Cable Corporation. So it's significantly historical. It's a beautiful aged building, 100 years old. It was built initially as office with some mixed-use office, light industrial as well. And so we're really thinking that it really does need a refresh, and as Kirsten was saying, sort of to fold this building and to really refresh and modernize it in the city of Emeryville. Rich Robbins with Wareham Development bought the property in 1978, and I happened to work on this property as well in 1995, so it's very dear to both of our hearts. It was one of the first live-work projects in the Bay Area and in this area in general, which I think is really worth noting. It's affordable, and it still maintains that affordability to this day. We're really looking to rebrand the building to hearken back to the sort of historical nature and the history of the building. So as you can see, and as Alyssa had also pointed out, this corner from Hollis and 62nd Street, as you're driving, as most of us have, I live very close to here as well, as you're driving on Hollis Street, you barely notice the building because I think there's some really beautiful mature trees in front of it, probably the speed of the traffic going by, but we'd really like to sort of remark it and rebrand it and actually reposition it as a community asset for the city of Emeryville. So in order to remain and become a revitalized community asset, we really think it needs to, we really think we need to create an identity for the building. And that's what these blade signs, we believe, will help with. And that will create a destination for the building, as well as create placemaking and just to give it more of a presence and visibility on the street. So this is the revised view from 62nd and Hollis Street. You can see those two vertical elements that are the kind of the prominent features on both 62nd and Hollis. The one on Hollis has Ruby's Cafe at the base of it, which is a beloved cafe. I'm sure we've all been there. And the residential entrance is on 62nd. It really does need wayfinding as well. So it clearly needs, we really believe it clearly needed a refresh here, and we have renamed the building the General Cable Building, so we're going back to the original roots of the building as well. And we do think that the vertical signs just further accentuate the beautiful architecture of these two elements in particular. And the blade signs, I don't think I need to repeat everything that Alyssa said, but they're, those vertical elements are approximately 60 feet tall, so the blade signs are roughly 35 feet in relationship to the 60-foot height. As Alyssa mentioned also, they're going to be, we're proposing to illuminate them at night with a, and the metals of the building are simple and sophisticated. We're trying to keep this kind of a very streamlined architecture to really let the architectural heritage of the building kind of come through more. So here's the view again at Ruby's Cafe. I also wanted to point out that at the end of, on the west end of 63rd and 64th Street, essentially, across the railroad tracks, is the Avalon Bay Project, which also has a blade sign that's approximately the same size, about 32 feet. So I think there's precedent. It's literally a block away. And obviously, there are other precedents in the area, in particular, for blade signage and the use of that signage for branding and for identity. So in conclusion, we really want to celebrate the age and history of this building. We want to reposition it, as I've mentioned, as a community asset. We want to strengthen the identity and create a destination that's more prominent and visible, and really announce the role of this improved, modernized building. We think the blade, the vertical blade, works really well with these tall vertical elements on both 62nd and Hollis, and we really do think it celebrates affordable housing in the city of Emeryville. So I think with that, I'm going to conclude.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Are there any clarifying questions for the applicant from any Commissioners?
Are you going to be painting the building as well? It looks like in your renderings, it's like a slightly darker gray.
We are proposing to paint the building, and that's under a separate design review submittal.
Alyssa, go ahead if you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, that's not considered part of the scope of your review.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions? Commissioner Dramm, go ahead.
So what is the use on the part of the building that we are putting these blades on? Is it residential or commercial?
Well, on Hollis Street, it's commercial, and that's, all of the properties along Hollis Street are commercial. You have dome construction there, as well as Ruby's Cafe, and I think the space right on the corner is going to be leased soon, and that's also a commercial space. The residential entrance is on 62nd.
So...
And that's the other vertical element on the left side.
So these towers, we have, one is like commercial, the other one is, I'm talking about the upper floors, not the lower. One is like commercial, one is residential, right?
Yes.
And the problem with these blades is like they block the view of the residence, especially the residence, but that's the case with all of the blade signage, you know? Thank you so much.
Could I clarify that on the residential blade, that is a stairwell that's going up that tower?
Yeah, that was my question.
So that's not really, it's not affecting or blocking a view necessarily for the residential.
That was my question, so you're good.
Is there something else that you wanted to add?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that on the 62nd Street side, that's where the entrance is, the main entrance for the residential, so it's a stairwell that goes up, and there is an elevator, so that's why it's actually as high as it is, is because there's an elevator room at the very, very top. So that is not impacting any of the residential units at all along the 62nd Street.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Wax, go ahead.
So is there no differentiation between the signage that you have going above the commercial and residential parts? Are you distinguishing the residential entrance?
The residential, here, do you want me to start? The residential entrance has additional, has an additional sign at the base of it with the units, and that's part of the existing signage, so there's additional wayfinding for residential, but literally the blade signs are the same for the two locations. There's just additional signage on the 62nd Street entry.
Okay, so it shouldn't be too difficult for someone who's, say, like, visiting friends at the building to know which way they should be going, or they're going to have to hunt around. They can see it, okay.
Right now, they're hunting around.
Great.
Yeah, I would say the residents say, the majority of the residents say, "Go to 62nd Street," and that's where it gets hard to say, well, because we actually have several entry points along that way, so they'd be able to say, "Oh, where the blade, where the signage is, you'll see us right there." And then on Hollis Street, it's more about identifying the building for drivers as they're coming, you know, going up and down Hollis Street.
Okay.
I just have one, oh, go ahead. Okay, I just had one clarifying question, which is, have you spoken with the residents about this plan? Have you had reactions from the residents that currently live there?
I do not believe we've had specific detailed conversations with the residents.
Okay. I believe I saw in the staff report, correct me if I'm wrong, that this would impede part of the view from a few of the units, from the windows. I'm looking at Alyssa here. Is that right, from the staff report?
Yes, that's correct. So on Hollis Street, the upper stories are live-work units. They're pretty non-traditional units, so they don't have standard walls coordinating off different uses within the space, so there is some extra level of configuration that can occur. We also noted, so this is on a, let me orient myself, this is an east-facing building face, so in terms of sunlight, there would not be substantial shadow cast over those units, but yes, blade signs can be pretty large and would partially block views.
Okay.
So to clarify, I would say, because it's the second floor that has the residential on it, and so what I would say is those two units that may straddle, may straddle it, it doesn't block the view to look out. It wouldn't, it would only block whatever element would be this way, and quite frankly, when you're in those units, you're basically looking straight out. You're not doing a whole lot of visual scanning this way when you're in those units. You're really just kind of looking out anyway, so.
And my understanding also is right now, it's not fully leased up, the building. So I'm not actually sure how many are on the 62nd Street side, as far as like notifying some of the tenants. I think there are quite, there's quite a bit of vacancy on that side.
Yeah, right now, we do have quite a bit of vacancy.
Okay. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Dramm.
So I'm not sure about the colors, the material. It was different than the rendering. Maybe my screen is a little bit different. What are the colors you picked for these?
For the materials?
Yeah.
Do you mean relative to the paint colors on the exterior of the building, or the signage itself?
The signage. So what I see here is silver and black, but on the rendering, I see dark green and gold. So which one is going to be?
So are those the samples of the materials going to be used?
Yeah, the smaller sample, that's sort of the dark bronze that I think Alyssa referred to as the darkened aluminum. That is the primary color.
Okay.
It's not intended to be green-ish.
Right.
It's really a bronze, a deep, dark bronze, and the other color is intended to be kind of a brass.
Brass.
A much warmer color, and we're trying to pick up that warmth in the paint colors as well, and some of the other.
Okay. What is the color for the existing windows frame?
The existing windows? Black.
Black, so it's similar to what we have here?
Yes.
And do we have any other brass in the building?
There are other brass in the building? We're proposing a darkened metal for the new planters at the base of the building, and that's going to tie in, we think, with the, with this darkened metal aesthetic. There are other, just minor improvements, but not really more specifically to the brass.
As long as like we can keep it in theme, I think it should be perfect combination. And the other question is, be ready for the heavy winds. Make sure these are very tight. I see everything flying. So make sure that it's not going to fly.
We think that's important as well.
It's a good week to say that.
Exactly. I do have one question, actually, a follow-on question about the materials. The brushed brass finish, is there any chance of reflectivity coming from that? Like a bounce, you know, sunlight bouncing into a side unit or anything?
We're hoping it's more of a flat. I mean, yeah, we're, I don't think the intention is that this is a highly reflective or even a reflective material.
Yeah, I mean, in the pictures, it looks pretty much matte, and here it's called brass, but, or brushed, but I mean, I can already see a little bit of reflection off of it in this light.
It's hard to find the exact metal that, and we can present that to Alyssa when we... And we can present that to Alyssa when we finalize the actual submittal. You know, if you'd like to take a look at it. It's not our intention, at least, to be reflective.
Okay, great.
I would like to add, because I just got some feedback, that I guess we... Although we haven't had a formal meeting, we have been talking about some signage informally. And some of the feedback that we've received from the tenants is this kind of signage on 62nd would absolutely help with package delivery in particular.
Thank you, I actually appreciate that.
I'm not impressed, it's...
I have seen many people waiting to do deliveries at that residential entrance. So that makes sense. Okay, so if there are no other clarifying questions at this point, thank you for the presentation. And Charlie, we can move to the public hearing. Thank you. Is there anyone in... Oh, sorry, let me just announce the time. At 7:21, we'll now open the public hearing portion of this meeting. And any speakers will have three minutes each. Let me just check if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to speak. Okay, seeing no one here, Charlie, is there anyone online? Or are there any online speaker cards?
I have not received any online speaker cards. And no one in the Zoom attendees has raised their hand to speak.
Okay, thank you. So now at 7:22, we will close the public hearing period and move to Commissioner comments and feedback. How about I just go in order this time? So Commissioner Wax, any feedback or comments?
I actually really like this proposal. Oh, yeah, we have highly varied volume. I think that the placement is really excellent. I am a little biased towards blade signs, I like them. I think that this building has a lot of really interesting elements to it that are made to get a little bit boring by not having this big break in the middle that the blade signs are going to accomplish. I think it's a good design and is going to look good on this building. I'm in favor of what I see here.
Thank you, Commissioner Wax. Commissioner Ghizoni?
I don't really have a lot to say about it. I like it, and I like this building. It's a very nice building, and it's a great location. And adding some identity to it makes sense to me.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons, Vice Chair Simmons?
Thank you, Chair. I like this sort of full refresh for the whole building. Usually, when I'm heading to the park, we cross at the southern, the intersection to the south, to get on the Greenway to get to the park. But maybe now, we'll go up to 62nd occasionally to take a look at the new paint job and sign. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dram?
I have a couple of comments. The very first one is to make sure this brass portion is not reflective. That's the very first one. The second one, what I see, at least on the rendering, the right side one, the sign is taller than the building itself, which on the left side, it's a little bit lower. And at the window, maybe you can play with the height, so it's respecting the building more than the sign itself. Okay, that's my second suggestion. And third one, we make sure that we don't add extra colors with the brass. We make sure that we're keeping the existing. Like, the frame is black. If we are using brass, we find something or match it to the entire building. Other than that, this is good. And we make sure it's very sturdy. That's the last part. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't have many other comments. I think that increasing wayfinding is great. I really do actually appreciate hearing that you have had dialogue with the residents, that they are requesting this. I think that's important to take into consideration. As long as there's no reflectivity issues and no chance of this impeding on the residents' darkness at night from the halo lights, then I'm in favor of it. And I feel like I've already learned more about this building than I knew about it just in a few-minute period. So I would encourage you to consider putting a plaque of some sort at some point, separate from this project, to talk a little bit more about the historical nature of the building and let people who are passing by learn more about it. But no other comments from me. So at this point, would anyone like to make a motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay, great. So a motion to...
To pass the 622 Hollis Street signage program.
Okay, great. Any other seconds?
I'll second that.
Charlie, whenever you're ready, you can call the roll.
On the motion by Commissioner Dram and seconded by Vice Chair Simons. Commissioner Dram?
Aye.
Commissioner Ghizoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Henme is absent. Commissioner Wax?
Aye.
Vice Chair Simons?
Aye.
And Chair Chaff.
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Great, thank you. All right, and I'm loving the opportunity to have props here. This is something that was not accomplished in the past few years, though. Okay, we'll move now to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is Planning Commissioner Comments. Does anyone have a comment to make? Commissioner Wax?
I have a question regarding the issue that we were... This came up toward the end of last year, where we were discussing whether or not we wanted to look at starting the process of maybe getting a new EIR so we can possibly increase the FAR. Is that still something that's in the hopper and is just like waiting for staff time? Or did that get lost?
Charlie, did you want to respond to that?
Creating a new EIR?
Yeah. We had a presentation where, you know, we discovered that, like, we had an inability to get more housing out of a project because of our current limits. And there needs to be a new EIR in order to even potentially raise the limits.
That would be for amending the general plan, if we were going to raise the limits in the general plan. Well, it's a little bit complicated. The developer for that project is rethinking their options. And subsequently, we've had staff discussions where, as it turns out, there are other mechanisms for actually getting more housing. There are a lot of state laws. It's kind of hard to keep track of them all. But there are certain state laws that do give the ability to waive FAR in certain circumstances. And it depends on the individual project. But there are a lot of different ways to do it. I know we had told you we would try to schedule a study session on this. We have put that off for now because that project, like I said, is being rethought, the project that was primarily affected by this issue. So... But you don't do an EIR in isolation. An EIR is done on a project. The project could be an amendment of the general plan. But we wouldn't initiate any kind of sequel review unless we had a project defined that the EIR was to analyze. And we have not done that at this point. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. I mean, it seems like what we're running into right now is an absolute upper limit other than the mechanisms that you discussed, which I was not aware of previously. And so if the EIR is going to be targeted towards a project, but we're talking about amending, possibly amending the general plan to where it applies to like everything in a district... Because we're capped out on our highest-density district, according to our current EIR, right?
No.
No?
No, not really. I don't believe we've had an FAR limit problem with any projects we've had up to now, other than this particular one. Even the Anni project, if you remember that one, that's the one that was gonna be like 600 feet tall. Even that was within the allowable FAR, believe it or not. So we haven't really had any other projects hit, you know, go propose to go over the FAR cap. So it's not really a real pressing issue.
Okay.
Great. Any other comments on that, Commissioner Wax? Or is that... That's okay for now? All right. Any other comments from other commissioners?
Wanted to say democracy's best done altogether. And it's so great to see everybody here. So glad we made this happen.
And I will second that. That was gonna be my comment as well. It's really nice to see you all in person, staff included. Thank you for making it happen. And it's already been a productive meeting. So if there are no other comments at this point, we can move on to Number Nine, which is adjournment. And we can adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission at 7:30.